Right. Good evening. I'd like to welcome you and call to order the May 27th Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. And I would also like to remind us of our guiding principles and the actions we're about to take this evening. Are we raising the bar in all of our actions? Are we honoring the past but not living in the past? Are we building positive connections with our community and outside partners? Is the decision-making process building a diverse, equitable, and inclusive community? Please join and stand me and stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under our, indivisible, and universal.
Eight. And we have a published agenda. Are there any proposed amendments? Councilmember Ternary has one.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, for the sake of Tony being in the audience here this evening, I'd like to move Business Item F to Business Item A, please, so he doesn't have to sit through the rest of the meeting.
Second.
All right. A motion by Councilmember Ternary, a second by Councilmember Morrissey to move Business Item F to the top of our agenda and make it Business Item A.
I would love to have a discussion about it, but I agree.
Fair enough. And Councilmember, we'll get to that in a moment, but all right. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the amendment has been made to the agenda. Councilmember Deener says he will try to join us a little later. Should we excuse him and then unwind that somehow later? Or should we excuse him maybe at the end of the meeting if he doesn't, doesn't show, doesn't make it? He's was traveling to a conference and he thought he'd get to his hotel room in time to join the meeting. So I'm looking at our fill-in attorney here and putting her on the spot. Maybe you should introduce yourself.
Good evening. Randy Schaefer filling in for your fill-in attorney, Charlotte. I think we should excuse him for the meeting and then if he is able to join, we should let him join.
Okay. And then since he, how does that affect his excusal then if he joins us? Then we would rescind it or just, do we need to take action?
I believe you could move to allow him to join the meeting or there could be a motion to allow him to join.
Well. Okay.
Mister Mayor, according to our attendees list, there is a Scott Deener logged on.
Okay.
Do you think it's an impostor?
No. So maybe we might need to promote him into the meeting and not have this discussion.
Yes.
Good.
All right. We'll wait a moment and see if that is the real Scott Deener.
Will the real Scott Deener please stand up?
At least show your face on the screen. Councilmember Chang, I don't know. You want your face on the screen.
Oh, God.
Maybe Deener's supposed to be there.
Hey.
We've been talking about you now and.
I can hear you. All right. We're all good to go. I am.
Welcome to the meeting and then. Would you like to make a?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we delete Consent Agenda L because Mr. Deener is with us.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, second by Councilmember Ternary to remove Business Consent Item L, the excusal of Councilmember Deener. And I don't think we need any discussion. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That item has been removed from the consent agenda. Are there any more proposed amendments? For Rosa Pepe?
I think.
Is there another amendment?
I would like to take off the, for the Consent Agenda D and put it on Business because I thought that was very interesting, the commute trip reduction and.
Second.
Yeah.
Okay, so that is taking Consent Item D and putting it probably the bottom of our business items, making it F. Yeah, G, that's right. Okay. All right, there's I actually, Councilmember, I have a motion. I have a second by Councilmember Chang. Councilmember Fenton made the motion. All right. Any discussion of that? All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the item Consent D is now Business Item G. Any other proposed amendments? Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
Mayor, assuming that the all changes are made, that I would say that we approve the agenda as amended.
Set it.
Okay. Everybody wants their, we got a motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, second by Councilmember Fenton to approve the agenda as amended. All right, we're to.
We need approval. We need approval of that.
Oh, that was.
That was the motion.
Oh, I guess we should.
Yes, sir.
You should. All right. All in favor of approving the Consent Agenda as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Consent, the agenda has been set for this evening. Thanks for catching that, Councilmember. All right, to our first citizen comment period, and I think Tony would like to address this. So Tony, I know you, but could you identify yourself for the record? And you have three minutes.
Great. My name is Tony Ives. I'm the Executive Director of Kitsap Community Resources and proud graduate of South Kitsap High School, 1980. I just had to throw that out there. Okay? So these things are important right now. So I'm here to address council and the public about, really about changes to South Kitsap and, and our facility and our personnel and the way we service Kitsap County, South Kitsap residents, especially in the city of Port Orchard. So I handed out a graphic which I'll put in the digital package tomorrow. I'll send it to you and Noah. So a few years ago, before I was here, there was a contract that KCR was managing. I think it was $20,000. It was rentalist assistance for city residents, city of Port Orchard residents. And that money never got spent. And there was a reason for that. There was so much money coming into Kitsap County through commerce, through other sources, and we had limited staff and just a lot of things to address at the time. So, so also there was a lack of data that we were tracking. So this is really what I wanted to present to council right now. The last year, we wanted to demonstrate how many people actually came into the South Kitsap Office asking for specific things. And number one, number two, we wanted to make sure we can measure not only the data, but measure any changes that, that are impacts that we have on the community. So this is what my team put together. This data represents only the last quarter, right? So 516 people came to, came into our Port Orchard, our South Kitsap Office. That's over on Jackson and Lund. And honestly, I invite all, we should have a trip to go in there. Most of them were housing-related. So 234 of those 516 people were housing-related questions. Moreover, how do I get rental assistance? So there's definitely a demand. I just want to highlight something else, the veterans, because it was mentioned that before, the agreement that we had with the city of Port Orchard was the rental assistance would only be for veterans and citizens over 65. But we wanted to demonstrate really that there was a wide need for it. So the veterans, I just want to say, we have an agreement with the Veterans Administration out of Seattle, and they spend a day in our office administering to veterans. We run a veterans program through Kitsap County. And so we try to braid services together. So let's say the city of Port Orchard does give us a rental, rental agreement that we could, we could use for the city of Port Orchard residents. After that, it's not just rental assistance. Someone walks into our office and they do an assessment. It's foundational community supports. So we say, what are your other needs? And then we try to braid those services around. So it's not just one. We're leveraging services. So I think that's an important distinction that we, that I want to make. This is a valuable program for us and for the city of Port Orchard. We're happy to be able to administer it. And we know that there is a need here in the community.
Tony, I hate to cut you off.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry. Is it one minute or three?
It goes fast, though. There is another button at the end of the meeting if you, if you want it, but.
No, I just.
We appreciate the information and I think everybody is very supportive of the dollars that we're about to distribute to you, for you to put work in the community. So we'll get to that in our business items very soon.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. And I'd like to invite you guys out to see the facility as well. All right.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening? Anybody online? Use the raise your hand feature and the clerk will bring you into the meeting.
Only one attendee and they are not raising their hand.
All right. I will then close the first citizen comment period. We have a modified consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve? Go ahead, Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
Mayor moved to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Rosa Pepe, a second by Councilmember Morrissey to approve the consent agenda as it was amended. All in favor? Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda has been approved for this evening. All right, we've got a presentation, the annual impact fee report. Mister Bond, present away.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code, Section 20.182130 sub 5, the school district and my department are to provide an annual report on impact fee accounts showing the source and amount of monies collected, earned and received, and the system improvements that were financed in whole or in part by impact fees. Pursuant to interlocal agreement 35-22 between the city of Port Orchard and South Kitsap School District, the district has transmitted it to annual report to the city. The districts and cities reports are both included in your, your packet tonight. And I can speak to the city's report and perhaps Director Crocker can, can add on to my remarks. We've broken this into two parts. There is the part that covers our park impact fee accounts. We're showing an end of year 2024 balance of $2.162 million. And we also document the spending that we have, the money that we have spent on parks in the previous years, because the state law for impact fees requires that we spend money within tenures of receiving it. And so we do accounting to show what money was spent going all the way, all the way back to 2012. And we are currently doing a good job of complying with the law that we spend money within, within the 10-year period. And the funds that we do have in the bank are currently earmarked for the Community Event Center and Downtown Waterfront Plaza projects, as well as I think we're spending some on the Givens Park project. And I may have misspoken there. I believe that, that the 10-year tracking balance was 2.1 million. I think the total balance is 3.9 million. Is that correct, Director Crocker? Then moving on to the transportation impact fee report. Again, we document the revenues that have been collected, the projects that have been constructed. There are six projects that we've spent money on in 2024, and we are sitting on about $6.8 million. And a good chunk of that is earmarked for our various projects that are planned, including Bethel. I can't remember what other projects you've programmed for those funds, Noah.
Sydney, Bethel, based 1.8, 1.9, pretty much any project in our tip.
So, so this satisfies our annual reporting requirement, and we just wanted to present this in a public meeting so that the public could read the report and, and then we file it away in our, our record and do it again next year. Thank you.
Questions for Mister Bond? I think it's pretty self-explanatory. It's just the annual requirement that we present this at one of our council meetings to explain to you and the public what we've collected and, and how much we've expended. And if there aren't any questions, we will move on to our business items. My computer would cooperate. Get back to the agenda. All right, we'll move on to Business Item which F, which is now our Business Item A. Adoption of an interlocal agreement between Kitsap Community Resource Housing Solutions Center for Funding Affordable and Supportive Housing. Mister Crocker, this is you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. We briefly heard from Mister Ives tonight about the Kitsap Community Resources Program. And so this is an agreement to expend some money towards them. So the city desires to engage in a, with KCR through its Housing Solutions Center to administer an affordable housing program for the city utilizing up to $30,000 of revenue allocated to the city pursuant to Senate House Bill 1406 to assist citizens of Port Orchard with rental assistance. The ILA with KCR provides rental assistance may only be used for citizens within the city of Port Orchard with a maximum of $2,000 per household, but an overall contract total of $30,000. With that, staff, we recommend that the mayor authorize, or excuse me, council approved the agreement.
Councilmember Warden?
Yeah, Mister Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Kitsap Community Resources Housing Solutions Center for Affordable and Supportive Housing in accordance with SHB 1406.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Warden, a second by Councilmember Fenton. And Councilmember Chang, I know, I know you have a concern that you sit on KCR's board, and we chat, chatted about that. But since I don't believe you out of conflict, but if you wish to.
I do. I think for appearance of fairness. So I'm going to just read this statement that I got from someone, which is basically, in addition to serving on the council, I am also board member for Kitsap Community Resources. Therefore, in order to avoid the appearance of impropriety, I will be recusing myself from consideration of this lease. I also recuse myself from any involvement with this lease as a KCR board member. So I'm just following through. And if you can let me know when to get back or just text me.
Jay will come get you in about 30 seconds.
I promise.
Councilmember Morrissey, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. The finance committee saw this, was it last week? I was trying to remember. I guess it would have been last week because we weren't here yesterday. So we recommended moving forward. We checked in. This is reimbursement. So no issues. All systems go here.
So reimbursement means they submit the receipt.
Yeah, they're going to send us to us and then we make sure everything's good to go. So.
Perfect. Yeah. Because these are what are referred to, this House Bill 1406, and they are required to be spent within the city of Port Orchard. So they're going to help folks out, provide us documentation. We'll verify that documentation and then reimburse them for those expenses. Right. And, you know, do good work with this. We've got more. So we'd love to help you some more.
We're due, sir.
All right.
So are you.
Yep. So wonderful. Any other comments or questions?
No, you bring up something very interesting. Tony does too. And that is the fact is that if we tried to do some of this on our own, we wouldn't be able, you know, by the time we finished administering it, hiring, we wouldn't be able to, you know, have five cents left in the pocket. So this is one of those win-wins, both for the community, the city, and the project. So thank you very much, Tony.
All right. Any other comments? All right, you'll be voting on the adoption of an interlocal agreement with Kitsap Community Resources Housing Solutions Center for funding for affordable and supportive housing services. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations, Tony. Yep. All right. And we will move on to our, to our business items, the former Item A, which is now Item B, Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing an Amendment to Contract Number 038-15, An Interlocal Agreement for Urban Community Development Program Funds for the Kitsap County Urban County Requalification, known as CB, CBGG and Home Program. Mister Bond?
Yes. Congress of the United States of America enacted the National Affordable Housing Act, Home Investments in Affordable Housing Program, as promulgated by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, allowing for units of general local government to enter into mutual cooperation agreements to form a consortium for the purpose of obtaining funding as a participating jurisdiction under the Home Investment Partnership Program. Consistent with that authority in 2015, Kitsap County and the cities of Port Orchard, Bainbridge Island, and Pauls Bow executed an interlocal agreement to jointly access funds through the Community Development Block Grant Program and the Home Investment Partnership Program. Since 2015, the parties to the ILA have executed amendments to the ILA to incorporate new statutory and regulatory provisions that HUD requires in the ILA. HUD has recently required new language be added to the ILA in response to changes in applicable laws. This amendment would make the required changes regarding signatory authority and necessary certifications and compliance. The staff recommendation is to approve the amendment to Contract 038-15, The Interlocal Agreement for Urban Community Development Program Funds for the Kitsap County Urban County Requalification, CDBG and Home Program. Thank you.
Go ahead, Council.
I move to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to Contract Number 038-15, The Interlocal Agreement for Urban Community Development Program Funds. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ternary, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. As Councilmember Rosa Pepe indicated earlier, if we tried to prop these types of programs up ourselves, we would eat up all the dollars in administration. We've grown to the size large enough that we could administer these dollars ourselves. It's a couple hundred thousand dollars we would collect. We would spend more than half the money just on one staff member. And so by partnering with the county, who has a human services division, us, Bainbridge Island and Pauls Bow, all partner with the county. And Bremerton does manage their own funds, but this is a much more efficient way to deploy these dollars. And we're allowed to apply. And matter of fact, the sidewalk improvements on Lippert, excuse me, a couple of years ago, it was funded from this, this source. So from time to time where it's appropriate, that we do apply for these dollars and have been successful getting them. So questions or comments? All right, you'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution authorizing amendment to Contract Number 038-15, An Interlocal Agreement with Urban Community Development Program Funds with Kitsap County. All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the, the resolution passes. What Item B, or what was B, which is now C, Approval of an Amendment Number Three to Contract Number C019-24 with SJC Alliance for Sydney Road Non-Motorized Improvements. This is you, Mister Ryan.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The Sydney Road Non-Motorized Improvement Project is focused on improving pedestrian and cyclist access. SCJ has been leading the design and engineering work under an existing contract. Amendment Number Three adds $34,694.50 to the contract, bringing the total to just over $317,000 to cover additional engineering support needed due to unexpected site conditions, including communications ducting and extra pavement repair. The amendment also extends the project timeline to October 30th, 2025, and includes support during construction. So that is construction support services through the design engineer as the project progresses. Funding is already included in the 2526 budget from the various city grant sources. Staff recommends the council authorize the mayor to execute this amendment.
Go ahead, Councilmember Chang.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute Amendment Number Three to Contract Number C1924 with SCJ Alliance for the Sydney Road Non-Motorized Improvements Project. Second.
Motion by Councilmember Chang, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Just for a reference, you know, last year we did the pedestrian and multimodal improvements in front of the middle school, Cedar Heights. This continues that project from, from Set Berry Lake Road down to the new apartments in front of the grade school. So we'll have bicycle and pedestrian improvements all the way from Tremont down to the apartments. And then in the future, when we get that culvert replaced and, and Ruby Creek, allow us to continue the, the improvements all the way down to Sedgwick. So just give you a reference point of where this project's at. Where can the council member?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Director Crocker, this one says, I think it looks like we have enough in here, but are we going to need a budget amendment? I know there's plenty in the funds. But do we, do we have access in the budget or we're going to require an amendment?
Yeah. So this, this project, I believe in, in total, again, this is roughly a $4 million project. So this is just the design piece of it. And we're going out to bid here in late May. So we'll have some construction bids hopefully in June. It's potentially, this whole project might need a budget amendment once we get the construction bids back. But we did have budget authority for the biennial budget for some design, some, for some construction. So at this time, we do have budget authority toward this contract, and we'll revisit this project once we actually have the construction bids.
Okay. So I'm hearing yes, because we haven't gone out to construction yet. And until we find that out, we won't know what that is. Okay. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Just fine, or we could be talking about it again?
Yep.
So, Councilmember Warden, go ahead.
Yeah, several of the sites along that area haven't been developed yet. It's still just raw land. How does that work with the frontage improvements that they'd be required to have? That we're going to basically do with, with this project? Are they still responsible for frontage improvements? They still, I mean, even though they're going to be completed? How's that work?
So this is a multimodal pathway. So my understanding is that as the properties develop, they would have to be considered to do the frontage improvements, which would be off the pathway sidewalks. Is that your understanding?
Well, sidewalks. This one's a little different because this project is part of our impact fee program. So anybody who builds frontage improvements on Sydney would be entitled to an impact fee credit against what they owe if they built the frontage improvements, because this is a citywide improvement. So, so they're going to pay impact fees and they will not receive a credit because we have built their frontage improvements for them, I think is the, probably the answer we're looking for.
So they receive a, they receive a credit for it.
They would if they, if they built it.
If they built it.
But we're going to build it. So now they wouldn't get that credit.
We would use their impact fees for a different project.
Yes.
Okay. But they are required, though, to.
There could be other improvements, though, like street lighting or stormwater things.
Yeah, there's several options, but they are required to install sidewalks and whatnot. Those aren't impact fees. Those are just part of the development, part of the development, correct?
Well, the impact fees in this case, when you do a complete street, are part of the impact fee. So we would build the sidewalks, the bike lanes, you know, everything gets built as part of a complete street, and that's what the impact fee is paying for. If it was a street that's not on the impact fee list, yes, they would have to build sidewalks and they would not get a credit for it, and it would be a requirement of the development.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. I was kind of curious how that was going to work because a lot of those sites right now are up for, up for commercial, you know, purchase. So I was kind of wondering how that kind of works out.
Remember the discussion at the work study about the different projects on the list, those different lists?
Oh, no, I know. It's one of them, for sure.
Yes. And by having it on the list, those projects where we think we're going to get development and we want to, someone sent that development, we would, you know, because not all those projects on that list are we going to, we're not going to be able to have capacity to build all of those things. But by putting some of those projects on the list, we're incenting developers to build sidewalks and make improvements where we want them to happen.
Are we going to upgrade the sewer systems, the pipes and whatnot before it's all?
We did it at, at front of the middle school.
Correct.
And now we're going to bring them down even farther. Yep, exactly. Other questions? Councilmember Ternary, go ahead.
Mister Bond, just for clarification, are we going both sides of the street, both the east-west sides of Sydney?
Partially. There, there is a segment on the east side that is not being completed, is this project. I think the west side gets full sidewalks and a portion of the east side near Hubd, where the sidewalks will include a crosswalk across the street. At least that's the most recent set of plans that I've seen, but I'm not involved in the design of the, the project.
I believe you're correct.
Yeah. And I was thinking that's where the portion that you were asking about, about future, if that was developed, then that parcel would be.
Yeah, but the, the, on the east side, you've got the Little League fields. And so there, you know, that's unlikely to develop. The, there's a handful of existing residences in there, but there's, there's probably not a ton of development potential unless the church decides to sell some of their land, in which case we would get frontage improvements in that location.
Yeah. But coming north from the, those residential areas, north to the overpass, that's the particular area that I think Eric and I are discussing.
Yeah. In particular, the most important piece is all along in front of the grade school, we're going to connect sidewalks there, which is, which is an important part.
Is there going to be a crosswalk to cross the street?
Down farther, yes.
Down farther, flashing lights for that?
I think so.
That's been our standard is that we've included RFBs, the Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beams.
They have that front of the, the elementary right now, though?
Well, they, they do, but down with the park complex says those children have to cross the street to get to the sidewalks to go through it. So. Well, they, they do, but down with the park complex says those children have to cross the street to get to the sidewalks to go through it, so.
It looks similar to what we did up by the.
Yeah, looks fantastic.
Turned out great.
Great.
All right. Any other comments? You'll be voting on the approval of amendment number three to contract number C zero one nine dash two four with SJC Alliance for Sydney Road Non-Motorized Improvements. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Contract amendment has been approved. We're to item C, we, item actually, D, which was the former item C, adoption resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement for the Annapolis Creek Culvert Removal and Replacement at Bay Street. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
Thank you. The Annapolis Creek Culvert Removal Replacement Project is at Bay Street. It's, I'm sorry, it's Bay Street approximately where the old aquarium is. It seemed that improving fish passage for endangered salmon species. Additionally, this is an aged infrastructure identified as a priority improvement in our stormwater comprehensive plan. The city has been awarded a four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar grant from the Washington State Recreation and Conservation Office to support this project. The project involves removing and replacing a culvert near Arnold Avenue and Bay Street to restore creek connectivity to Sinclair Inlet. This grant was funded to design phases from thirty percent to a hundred percent completion. Previously, we'd done a thirty percent design on this. The total design cost is five hundred thousand dollars with a required fifteen percent local mash of seventy five thousand dollars. Staff recommends council authorize the mayor to execute the grant agreement. The city can move, so the city can move forward with the project.
Councilmember Fenton, go ahead.
Okay, I move to authorize the mayor to execute the grant agreement with the Recreation and Conservation Office for the Annapolis Creek Culvert Removal and Replacement at Bay Street project in the amount of four hundred and twenty five thousand.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fenton, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. And as you can see in the staff report, we funded a thirty percent design a number of years back with local dollars. And now we've got this grant that's going to take us to a hundred percent design. And once we have that hundred percent design and know what it's really going to cost to replace, we can pursue grants to then, you know, go to construction and replace this aging piece of infrastructure. So have questions or comments? Go ahead.
Do we know what kind of, is it going to be a bridge like they've been doing most likely?
It's, it's likely going to be a concrete box culvert, also considered a bridge.
A bridge.
It's a pretty significant size and the current condition is that it's constructed out of wood. So that portion of Bay Street is over a wood structure.
Right. Right, you'll be voting and no more questions. Okay. You'll be voting on a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a grant agreement for the Annapolis Creek Culvert Removal and Replacement at Bay Street. All in favor? Please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the resolution passes. We're to now item E, formerly item D, adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with SMS Cleaning Inc. for janitorial service for services for five city facilities. Mr. Ryan, this is you.
Thank you. On May first, the city issued a bid request for janitorial services at five city-owned facilities. The bid closed on May fifteenth and the five proposals were received. After evaluation, SMS Cleaning Incorporated was identified as the lowest qualified bidder with a total annual cost of sixty three thousand nine hundred and sixty two dollars and thirty six cents, including tax. SMS brings over twenty five years of experience and currently serves with other public sector clients. The proposal includes all labor, materials and equipment needed to do the job. Staff recommends awarding the contracted SMS cleaning and based on cost qualifications and ability to meet the city's needs. And I also add that the city did do follow-up reference checks and clients are happy.
Wonderful.
Nice. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with SMS Cleaning Incorporated for janitorial services in the amount of sixty three thousand nine hundred and sixty two dollars and thirty six cents inclusive, inclusive of applicable sales tax.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ward, and a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. And before Mr. Morrissey asks the question, yes, this will require a budget amendment. That's one of them. Secure performance issues with our prior service provider. And it was considerably, this bid was considerably lower than everybody else. And I'm glad that they had good references. So, but yes, we'll have to, when we do our next budget amendment, we'll bring that forward. It's about five grand or so more a year.
No, I was just going to say, Mayor, that I appreciated that Dennis told us that they had extensively checked references because there is a significant difference between their bid and the, the next bid that would lead you to be concerned. So thank you, Dennis, for following up and letting us know that.
I, I'd also add, I know that there's a pretty significant jump there in, in, in price as well, but when you do that little bit of math, because that was an annual contract, right? Not just, yeah, you know, that's five thousand three hundred and thirty dollars a month for five locations. And this is a pretty big location in and of itself. So a thousand dollars a month per location seems pretty reasonable to me. So, you know, I, 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 thank you for doing the work. I think it is what it is. It's the lowest bid, too.
Mayor and council, Councilmember Deener has his hand raised.
Okay, thank you for pointing that out. Councilmember Deener, go ahead.
So I, I appreciate the, the price that we got here. I think that's wonderful. I'm just curious if Dennis has an opinion on why it's, you know, nearly fifty percent of the next closest bid, like I'm just curious about why such a big difference.
I, I can only speculate. They have close offices. They have an office in Gig Harbor. They have several clients. I've actually had a previous experience with this contractor. So somebody who's worked for me in the past. I didn't know that until we opened bids. They have large police departments on the other side of the bridge in Tacoma. And they have some transit customers and it's just, I think it's economies of scale. They're set up to do larger quantity inputs, so that maybe their margins are a little bit lower, but they, they, they're picking up the clientele.
And sometimes contractors just throw a big number out in hopes.
To save, yeah.
They can get, get some work if nobody else can. So I'm thankful we got the bid that we did.
And Mr. Mayor, I, I will also add that the rules with procurement on the MRSC small works roster has changed. So now we are required to email it to every single applicant on the roster. So there could be several hundred, so we could be getting bids from the east side of the state.
Thank you.
Yep.
But Dennis, that's only if they chose to bid.
Only if they chose to bid, but people do throw those numbers out there just hoping.
Because you could afford to open a new office and hire a whole bunch of people over here if you've got one of those higher, higher numbers potentially. All right, other questions? You'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with SMS Cleaning Inc. for janitorial services for the five city facilities. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The resolution passes. We're to item F, which was formerly item E, approval of amendment number fifteen to contract number zero six six dash two O with Rice, Fergus Miller for the Community Event Center project. Mr. Vaughn, this is you.
Yes, in twenty twenty, the city entered into a contract sixty six dash twenty for architectural and engineering services with Rice, Fergus Miller for the Community Event Center project. The contract has been amended fourteen times prior to now to add scope of work and to extend the contract expiration dates. Due to delays related to shoreline approval and federal review, design work was paused until recently. In January, amendment number fourteen was approved to extend the contract through June thirtieth of twenty twenty seven. Amendment fourteen was expedited and did not include additional fees due to the rapidly approaching expiration date. At that time, RFM had requested additional compensation due to the ongoing permitting in project design and escalating wages and costs. Amendment fifteen has been prepared to provide RFM with additional compensation due to the thirty month extension of the design contract and to add, and to add scope related to making revisions for compatibility with the SR one sixty six design project, compliance with new federal mandates and the additional, the addition of signage and wall art within the building, completing revisions required through the permitting of shoreline improvements and additional, additional federal environmental review work and plaza stormwater drainage revisions for compatibility with Bay Street. The total cost for amendment number fifteen is three hundred and twenty one thousand ninety five dollars with a hundred and fifty one thousand one hundred and sixty two dollars of that amount being a fee increased associated with the contract extension for the thirty month period. This amendment will take the CEC project to one hundred percent construction documents. Additional amendments may still be required as described in the scope and fee of the proposal as attached to the staff report. Staff recommends approval of amendment number fifteen to contract sixty six dash twenty as presented. Thank you.
Councilmember Ternary.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to approve amendment number fifteen to contract zero six six dash two zero with Rice, Fergus Miller in the amount of three hundred and twenty one thousand dollars and ninety, excuse me, three hundred and twenty one nine thousand ninety five dollars as presented.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Ternary, a second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. So this does take us to a hundred percent design, but we have removed from the scope. We don't have a tenant for the ground floor or it could be a retail space or an office space down there. So we're just taking that to drywall. And we're not putting any floor covering, you know, lighting and because we don't know how it's going to be used. Also, what was, and I'm pretty sure I've spoken to this previously, what we envisioned for a coworking space, some of the, that industry has changed and it doesn't seem viable as a coworking space because a significant piece of that business industry is leasing out meeting space and rooms. And our agreement with the library, they're going to manage those meeting spaces so that revenue source isn't available to the entity that would do a coworking space. So it doesn't, so we're not sure what is going to go in that top corner either. And it's a pretty sweet location with a view of the water, the mountains up on the second floor. So once, so we're just, we're going to not finish that out as the earlier drawings showed with furniture and everything for a coworking space. We're just going to take that space to drywall also until we figure out what it is we want to have in that space and then follow up later with those tenant improvements. So I see Councilmember Deener has his hand raised. Your question, Scott?
Yeah, my question is, I see the amendment provides for a lot of things that we would be required to do no matter what, permitting related, shoreline, federal requirements, stormwater, those kinds of things. But the only thing that I see that's not exactly required is the wall art within the building. And so I was hoping to understand a little bit more about how we're coming to that and what that looks like and council's level of engagement in that element when the time comes.
So I recall discussing this at a previous city council meeting. We have in the entry, there's an area of the building that is open from the first floor up through the second floor to the roof. And so there's a large wall that extends two floors. And the idea there was we were going to do like a kind of a three dimensional relief map of Sinclair Inlet that would have some texture and depth to it. Indicting kind of the topography of our area. And there was support for proceeding with that alternative at that time. It did, just never got put into one of the contracts. And that's really one of the final steps of design. And so it is being brought forward now to complete that task, that task. If we, if we don't do that particular alternative, we would have to come up with another one. But I believe we presented three alternatives at that time.
Yeah, it was a few years back and it's, it's a three, that, remember that three dimensional map of, of, I think it's more than Sinclair and it might be of the waterways of Kitsap County. I don't. It's, it's bigger than Sinclair Inlet, I believe. And, but it is that, you know, you've seen the, the wooden type maps that, you know, the, 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 the waterways have depth to that. And so it's, it's a three dimensional map that goes up two stories. So it's, it's rather large, has lighting on it. And gosh, it's been probably five years or more since the, we went through all those alternatives.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, I do remember now that we did talk about it some time ago, so I appreciate that reminder of what it would look like. My next question is, is it, is it usual to is it usual or customary to include art in these kinds of projects as part of the budget?
It's my first community center.
Yeah, I think, I mean, some, some cities require it. They have policies like one percent for the arts. But yeah, I think it's pretty normal to do something like that.
Think we want to have it designed professionally and, and be part of our bid documents. There we go. Look at that.
Nice.
It is Sinclair Inlet.
And, and Mr. Mayor, that's fine. I just, I'd like us to have the same considerations for some of our streets improvements and our roundabouts as well. If we could consider budgeting a set aside for art for some of these other improvements around the city, I think that would be very appreciated by our, our people.
Other comments?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I'm not familiar with that. Well, I wasn't here five years ago, so it would be nice to get that map again or show us some of the, the new design. And then so are you saying the libraries all at the bottom, which I knew that?
Yes.
And then retail is gonna, where's that retail space?
There's on the closest to seven eleven on that corner is a, is a space that could be office or retail. It's owned for either. And we'll have a tenant of some sort in there. We've also got office space on the ground floor for a customer service counter. It's, there's a potential that the clerk's office, we're going to have an employee over there that is in charge of the, you know, event planning, event. And then the clerk's office right now handles special events and all of that. So there's kind of a relationship there. And we're space constrained down in the finance department. It could be an opportunity to move the, the two employees in the clerk's office and that new employee down to the office space that's there, which has the front, the, the customer service counter as you walk in the door. And then from that counter, you walk into the library space, which is the remainder of the ground floor. The second floor has two, three, four meeting rooms, three small, one larger, and then the two event spaces. So I think it'd be worthwhile as we, to have a presentation and maybe at a future, future work study, because I'm, three of our council members weren't here when all the design and, you know, finishes and everything were picked for the community center. So yeah, there'd be some benefit to that. Councilmember Chang?
Yeah, in the event that the wall map doesn't go through, I'd like to throw out the idea of adding a climbing wall. Maybe we can have the library to.
I don't know that our insurance company would appreciate that.
A bunch of beanbags in the mud.
Nor would our attorney. So good idea, but I'm not sure that's going to go anywhere. All right, other questions or comments about this contract? All right, you'll be voting on amendment number fifteen to contract number zero six six dash two zero with Rice, Fergus Miller for the Community Event Center project. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Contract amendment has been approved. We are to our new business item G, which is formerly consent item D, adoption of a resolution adopting a personnel policy and operating procedures related to commute trip reduction. Slund?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. The City of Port Orchard is a voluntary employer for the purposes of Washington's Commute Trip Reduction Law, which requires large employers to implement programs designed to reduce single occupancy vehicle commutes by their employees. Human Resources recently confirmed that within the Community Development Department, one thousand one hundred dollars is budgeted for each of year of the biennium for commute trip reduction purposes. Therefore, staff is proposing an incentive program for employees using those alternative commute modes. Staff anticipates the primary uses of the program will be transit ferry passes, as we do have employees that take the foot ferry across and some other Kitsap transit ferries, even from the Seattle side. And some interest in the rideshare only reserved parking spaces in the employee parking lot. Kitsap Transit is the designated countywide administrator of the Commute Trip Reduction Program for Kitsap County. As such, they have a program which requires participants to use the alternative commute, walking, biking, ride sharing, ferries, et cetera, a minimum of three times a week. The city's recommendation is that we would just have employees sign up for their program, show us that proof of enrollment to be eligible for the city's incentive program. Therefore, the resolution that is proposed for you tonight would adopt. Therefore, the resolution that is proposed for you tonight would adopt personnel policies and procedure to implement this program, and that is our recommendation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Morrissey?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I move to adopt a resolution amending personnel policy 4.10 and creating operating procedure 340 related to commute trip production incentives for city employees.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Morrissey, second Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Parking's a premium out here and we don't have enough parking for our employees. Anything we can do to reduce the number of cars out here is a good thing. So I thank you for your work on this, Debbie. So Councilmember Fenton, did you have questions?
Yeah, I was, I think the incentives are great. How many, what's the percentage of the employees here in, you know, in the city, city limits or at this building do that? I was kind of curious about the percentage.
I do not have that number. We did a survey, I believe in 24, but I do not have those results at my fingertips. I apologize for that.
No, yeah, I was just wondering how many, because we have, you know, so many employees and how many really do this?
The one thing about the survey data is it breaks up each individual work site. So we, as you know, we have properties down on Prospect, things like that. So it, we'd have to kind of pull that data back together.
Right, yeah. I was just, I was just curious about that, you know, how many people really do take advantage of this?
Yeah, there were more people than I thought when I rolled out this policy for employee comment. So I think we have five people who will automatically qualify for the transit passes out of the gate.
Yeah, I'd like.
Oh, yes, you, I thought you were pointing at Councilmember Warden and I'm going, no, his hand isn't.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Lund, do you know what we spent that $1,100 on last year?
It's not in my budget, Nick or Noah.
Oh, it's not your budget. Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
I, I, I think we've had this as a standing item in our budget and during the pandemic, we transferred the commute reduction program from one employee to the next and it just sort of hasn't been used for a few years. And so we're, we're, we pointed out that it was still in the budget and could this happen? And so we started digging into it and found out we do have the money and let's put it to use.
Well, excellent. Whoever caught that and good job as a team. Kitsap Credit Union, my former employee has been part of this program. How many employees do you have to have? It's a requirement.
100.
100, okay. So we're just getting to that size now where Kitsap Credit Union's been there for a while and there's some great perks and it really does help incentivize. So that's why I was curious. There are others who already do, so I would tell you maybe tap into some of those resources because I think it, it can help relieve the congestion in our streets. Thank you.
And our parking lots.
I, I was made aware, when I first arrived at the city six years ago now, there was a van pool subsidy that the, I believe some of the money was used for. And a longer-term employee than I provided me proof that we used to just offer financial incentives for car pools, right? Because there's no, nothing to reimburse there other than to financially reward you. So maybe in time we can get to some of those as well.
Yeah, cool.
Councilmember Chang?
No. Okay, good. Well, one of my questions was answered. So I was wondering if 1,100 is enough and if not, can you increase it? Also, I'm wondering, does telework count towards that? So if someone telecommutes three days away, okay.
Yeah, so interesting questions, Councilmember. The $1,100, you know, we'll start out, we'll just have to monitor it. I, I can see commute trip reduction is kind of alternated, is my understanding, between community development and then HR had a role. We've now split that where HR will manage the employee aspects of the program. DCD will continue to manage the municipal code section that applies to employers in the city. So maybe the money can ultimately come over to the HR budget. We can keep a little bit closer eye on it, but I'm happy to make budget requests to give employees more benefits. But on the telecommute, that's been a topic of conversation for the last week and that answer is yes. Compressed work weeks, the 980 kind of schedule, 410s count as well as telecommute.
And part of how we came to that three days is because our policies allow you, if your job allows for it, to telework two days a week. So if, so you're using alternative means on the three days that you are coming into the office. And then to the financial side of it, it's $1,100 a year. So we've got a biennial budget. So we have budgeted a floor rate for $2,200. And if we get to mid-year review and everybody wants this and we've spent $2,000, I'm certain we'll ask you for a couple thousand dollars more to support the program. So I think Councilmember Warden had his hand raised.
Yeah, I think telecommuting, you're already getting a perk right there in itself. I, I'm sorry, but like, that's, that's kind of an easy way to receive.
But you're not going to get it for that. It's just, we, you, you've, on the, you can telework, you up, you could. So the three days you were coming into the office, you're not bringing your car and now we'll incent you for those, you have to, those three days. So you're never bringing a car to the office as in essence.
Or, or your body.
People would sign up for that.
Two days, two days, yeah.
You would get a lot of people doing that, so I don't know.
My most complicated employee commute that I'm aware of now, ferries, bikes, teleworks, and occasionally due tonight meetings must drive. But there's still meets that three times a week doing some version of a leave your vehicle at home.
The incentives, I mean, I definitely understand my day job right up the hill here. There's van pull from, people will, because it's challenging to get out, move, of course, you know, if you don't win the parking lot lotto, it's, it's, that's what it is. I mean, as they call it, you know. But yeah, but it's, it's very challenging. So I mean, you're definitely, there should be incentives to people like that because it's a sacrifice. You're not just leaving work to go to a doctor appointment or a dentist appointment. There's real sacrifices in carpooling. So I, I understand that.
Councilmember Rosa Pepe?
No, I was just curious, Debbie, you know, obviously strongly support this, seen it when I worked at Pierce Transit and Mason Transit. So I didn't know whether we were partnering to kind of have a trip reduction fair with Kitsap Transit or, you know, whether we've had enough information, you know, as we've crossed the 100-person threshold. And flipping before you get to that question, it was very interesting during the pandemic, both my daughters actually received stipends for working out of, out of the home to offset the savings in electricity, sewer and stuff like that. It was, it was surprising what, what, how they reimbursed some of the employees, both for Sweet, the Swedish hospital and the Seattle Public Library.
So I won't get in the weeds of my wife, same thing, like internet, all that jazz because it's expensive. I agree with you.
Okay, sorry.
No, we do have a benefits fair. We did invite Kitsap Transit last year, we, two years ago, I think Beth is planning, my HR analyst Beth, mine, the city's HR analyst, is planning a benefits fair and we will certainly invite Kitsap Transit as well and this will be an added benefit. The 100-employee threshold is per work site and because we have about 30 employees located out in the industrial park, we don't quite meet that threshold yet, so it'll be a while. But it's still, we require large employers here to do it. Why wouldn't we want to model that?
Thank you.
It'd be tough to get 100 people in this building.
I'd just like to note for something that was on consent agenda, that had a robust discussion.
All right. Any further questions or comments? You'll be voting on the adoption of a resolution, adopting a personal policy and operating procedures related to commute trip reduction. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? The resolution passes. We're done with our business items. Mr. Ryan has a discussion item related to garbage service. So, Mr. Ryan, take it away.
Thank you again. So if everyone does not know, the city is responsible for procuring and managing our own contracted garbage service. The City of Port Orchard's current contract for solid waste service, services with waste management is nearing the end of its final extension. We entered into this contract in 2015 and then we had five one-year extensions that were available to the city. In addition to the standard waste collection, waste management has provided support to the city through services such as the annual spring cleanup and free sanitation services at various locations throughout the city, including sites owned by external agencies like the county, fire district, library, and West South. And I'll discuss a little bit more on that later. As this contract nears its expiration date at the end of June, the city must carefully evaluate its next steps. We have three primary options I'd like to repeat with you tonight, so you can go to the next slide. Oh, is this slide, I'm sorry, this is slide.
Sorry, my last pause is.
That's okay.
Having fun tonight.
I will just keep going and we can go back if there's any questions. So the first option is a little bit harder to get there. It would be the request for proposal. The city may consider opening a public solicitation process to identify and contract with a new solid waste service provider. While this approach may allow for competitive pricing and potentially updated service models, it poses several significant challenges to a city of our size. I keep from the agency that had its own garbage service, I'm very familiar with managing the fleet and ordering the equipment. Not every vendor out there is going to have trucks available to use the compact trucks. They would be an infrastructure investment. Any new vendor would need to invest in new compact trucks, estimated at over $2 million for three to four trucks for a city our size. The lead time to get those built and delivered is one to two years. It's going to be closer to the two-year mark. You're also going to need drivers to operate those trucks. Operational startup is, in addition to the trucks, the vendor needs to procure and distribute all the new residential garbage cans and the commercial and recycling cans throughout the city. So right now, Waste Management owns all the cans and dumpsters in the city. Local facility access, the current local transfer station is operated by Waste Management, I believe. Is it the county or is it Waste Management? I believe it's operated.
The county.
The county. So if that could be a variable there, I wasn't real familiar, that's why I asked that question. So the timing and the transition risk, the time required for procurement, the setup, the transition poses a risk of service disruption and possible delayed implementation. Due to these logistical and financial hurdles, soliciting a new vendor may not be a practical or cost-effective solution in the near term for a city our size. That was option number one. Option number two is to renegotiate with Waste Management. The city could choose to directly negotiate a new agreement with its existing provider, Waste Management. This approach offers continuity and operational stability with the vendor already familiar with the city's needs and infrastructure. However, rates are expected to increase and all services will be subject to negotiation. Rate increases, the fees are expected, expected to rise and will be based on service levels and the number of customers within Port Orchard. Continuation of existing services, the current service levels can be maintained under a new agreement. No-charge city services, this is something that Waste Management has expressed that they have no interest in providing free garbage at those facilities I mentioned earlier and they have no interest, it could be negotiated, to provide the city cleanup, spring cleanup event continuation, if included in the contract. While renegotiating can be a time-intensive process, it may result in more tailored service provisions than public solicitation or state-regulated rates. You may note that the exhibit provided later rates may end up being higher than the WUTC pricing, which is the Washington Utilities Transportation Committee. So that's option number two. Option number three is to adopt the Washington Utility Transportation Committee, regulated solid waste rates. The city may opt to allow residential solid waste services to be governed directly under the Washington Utilities Transportation Commission or the UTC regulatory framework. This would shift rate-setting authority to the UTC, which regulates various utility services across the state, including solid waste. Key considerations for this option include rate stability and transparency. UTC regulated rates are standardized and publicly available, providing transparency to residents. Regulatory oversight, this model places the burden of compliance and rate adjustment on the vendor through the commission, potentially simplifying the city's administration involvement. Reduced local control, adopting UTC rates means the city would have less flexibility to customize services or negotiate specific terms to address local priorities. Service scope, the city will lose the ability to influence the inclusion of value-added services, so the community cleanup, the spring cleanup day, our free service that we call for the municipal locations that we previously mentioned. This approach may be suitable for jurisdictions looking to streamline management responsibility but not meet the city's unique operational or community service expectation. I will also note, if the city opts to explore the WTC-regulated solid waste rates, we would no longer have the requirement, it is codified, but we could wait the, we, you could change the code where we would wait the compensatory, you must have garbage service. That's probably one of the biggest complaints I get from citizens is that people who only live there part-time and by code, by our old contract, every resident has to have service.
Be careful with that, though.
Yes, that's your, that's, that's my code.
All of a sudden people walked out of it and then garbage isn't getting picked up.
It, I'm sorry, did you say that, that's on the WCT or that's on Waste Management?
It's just in our current contract, but it is codified, so it would require a code change to change that.
Our code says you need to have garbage service currently.
Right.
Yeah. A way off in for conversation. Are you done, Dennis?
No, I have a little bit more. So those, those are the three options and I did want to back up to option number two. And I would invite legal representation to chime in on this too. We're a very small city of under 20,000. Your King Counties, they have the power of negotiation. So I just want you to keep that in mind as you explore the benefits and the analysis that we're going to consider. So I'm going to, I'm going to jump real quick to, just, this is hard to read, I know. This is our current facilities and I, I can't swim in there, but maybe.
Is this in our packet?
Do you want to just read the numbers to it?
No, I will, I will, I will snip this to everyone. Um, sorry.
Yeah, I think, Dennis, I think it'd be more beneficial for this information to be emailed out to the council members.
Absolutely. I'll just, I'll just tell you real quick, everything in blue is the non-city-owned facilities. Everything white is our facilities that we own, like the obstender, city hall. So it's, it's, it's about $1,400 a month services go to others, other than the city. And the city has about, we anticipate that we would pay about $1,400 generally a month in, in the white there. So I will definitely.
I'm sorry, $1,400 a month?
Approximately $1,400 a month. Okay. Is what, if we decided to adopt the WTC rates, we would have an additional cost of about $1,400 a month out of about 2,800 total services we get out.
Our current contract has our municipal facilities baked into the, to what the service that, so our citizens are basically paying for it indirectly because Waste Management isn't doing it for free. There, there's, it's just baked into what we get at the municipality. And then the blue are facilities that we don't own, like the Given Center and the Fire Station 31, when the green was put, I, we might have not been in the fire district, that was our fire station. And so we've got these longstanding items that we're providing as part of our contract that we're providing garbage service to these, these other facilities out there. So I think Councilmember Warden, you, you first. No? Go ahead.
So like, you know, I, I would echo what I believe everyone said is that our biggest complaint is people that are snowbirds and are gone and they have to still pay for garbage. Works well for me across the street because sometimes I have more garbage and they're gone, so I'm able to use that. But, but the, on a separate note, if any of these options, what would be an increase to our citizens on that, by, you know, by taking that? Do you have any idea?
I've, I've compared and I've looked at, there is no in-kind customer like us. There's, there's cities that have their own garbage service and I tend to see the contracted service, the negotiated contracts seem to have higher rates because they're looking for those other incentives for the municipality. So everything I've seen, but it's, it's a really hard comparison. Some of them, like in King County, they have $200 a ton at the landfill where I think ours is $130 a ton at the landfill. So it's really hard to distinguish where the, where the savings are. Some agencies have better rates for their citizens and higher rates for their businesses and the commercial. Some, some agencies, it's the other way around. But the WT, the UTC, that's their acronym, sorry, I keep saying the whole thing. But the W T, the U T C, that's their acronym. Sorry, I keep saying the whole thing. They do, it's regulated, so those rates are going to be very transparent and established. And currently, we're very similar to the W C rate because we're in a 10-year agreement currently.
Paul'sville has its own collection service, but as Dennis, we need to spend $4 million on equipment, hire staff. We don't have a facility where we could have these trucks and be more trucks for our mechanics. I don't, it's just not really a viable option for us. The size of the city we are. I don't know why Paul'sville does it, but they always have. So, Councilmember Benton?
Yeah, and maybe it's on there because I know you're going to send that to us. Will we get a breakdown of what, of one, two, and three and see the money, how the money is?
I don't know what the money is because we haven't negotiated.
I think only three, we, we could do an analysis on three. Because that, that's set by the, we could do an estimation on three. To one would require us to negotiate a new agreement with Waste Management.
And they, and, and that's what they want us to do is to have a new agreement.
Or that would be option, that was option two. Option one is
The county.
Putting this, putting this all out of bid to, you know, the world to, to try and get a new, potentially a new service provider. Councilmember Warden?
You attend the utility council, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Where you, other municipalities in the area, the same services. So you, you know, like what the counties be charging residents. I, I'll be honest. My wife tells me what to deposit in my, my share in account every month. That's what I do. I don't know what garbage service is. She complains, so I know it's a lot. But what, what was, was the county residents pay compared to us? Is it the same or?
I don't think they do. We have, we have utility tax.
You don't think they do?
I, I, I don't have their information. They're, they're totally different entity. And so.
I'm confident it's less because I don't believe they have recycling the way we do or other services like the yard waste. The, and, and our service right now runs about $90. That's.
Every other month.
Yeah.
Three months. So it's $90, it's $30 a month. At least that's, that's what I'm paying.
Garbage in.
For about $30 a month. And Dennis believes we would stay about that rate. We're on a 10-year-old agreement. If we went with the Utility and Trade Commission.
Now, trying to go into, obviously, that's not realistic, just like you stated, mechanics alone. They just don't have the capacity for that.
Yeah.
I just think that we should receive ballpark the same services as the county. I mean, when we're high density, it's a much quicker pickup. They're collecting much more, you know, at a quicker rate than the county. So I was kind of curious of where we were in that, so.
And I don't know if the county has a contractor, if they're on the W, the U T C rates. I do, I can't tell you the W, the U T C rates is that we are in the Kitsap County tariff, so we would be governed by the same regulation. It would be, if we adopted the U T C rates and if they're using the U T C rates, it's going to be the same.
How about Bremerton? Are they?
Bremerton is currently under contract from 2019. It does sound like they're going to try to renegotiate their contract. I, I, the only information I have about Bremerton is that their contract was 2019 is when they entered into it. Sorry, I'm losing my voice. But I, we are, we are running out of time. We have till the end of June. I do know if we want to try to negotiate it, they would be willing to extend us an extension up to four months. We do, we do threaten to run out of, I mean, service can be interrupted if we run out of contract.
What was the extension again?
If we wanted to try to renegotiate an agreement with Waste Management directly, that they would extend for up to four months.
Okay, thank you.
Their current agreement, but not if we went out to bid.
Right, understand.
Which I don't think we have enough time to go out to bid.
Can't we do both? Can't we renegotiate and also do an R F P?
I know. Why not?
I, I don't have a lot of faith in the R F P process because you would have to get a provider that has the trucks, that has the staffing, and that can provide, I'm guessing around 5,500 residential units in the city. Is that accurate? Not including apartments. So it's quite the infrastructure that you would have to have. In addition to that, you would have to have like roll-off trucks.
But we put out the R F P and we just don't get any responses, but at least we tried.
Waste Management is willing to extend it if we.
If we don't put it out.
Yeah.
And they make us not, that's not a good negotiation if they don't let us look at competitors. That's not a negotiation, in my opinion. I don't know the legal definition.
Simplest solution could be just accept the U C T. But Councilmember Morrissey, you have a thoughts?
Yeah, I, I just had some quick questions and maybe I just was diving into this while you were covering it and missed it. Did we see what the impact on the average person in the city of Port Orchard would be?
That's what I asked.
Like, I, I, you know, I have a neighbor who has a smaller trash receptacle than I do. So I would assume Waste Management is already charging based off of how much usage. Because I can get a lot more in my garbage can than they can, but they also have yard waste and I don't. So there, there could be factors into that that I'm, I'm missing here. But I don't feel like I would be able to give you any good guidance one way or another until I know what it meant to the average citizen here in Port Orchard.
I, I think Dennis, you're going to need to break, give me some analysis on the U T C alternative and what that would.
All, all I can show you is the U T C analysis because there is no true comparison because I've looked at counties that are in other parts of the state and they have Pierce County, Clark County, Skagit County. We all have different tonnage rates at the landfill. So if it's $200, $185 or 100, ours is extremely low at $125 for the state. I, I, I can tell you what I've looked at for that entry level residential. Some, some cities don't have the 20-gallon can. I think ours is, I think the one that I did look at was 35 gallons and we were lower. And I mean, I saw them as low as $20. I've seen them as high as like $30 to $40. So.
I, I'm not trying to make it fairer than it needs to be, but I gotta have something to compare against, right? I, I can't even compare an apple against an orange because all I know is one apple.
Somehow Dennis, we've got to be able to do some analysis.
Yeah, I mean, somewhere. We definitely know that our neighbors, we all, we all use Olympic Transfer Station. Like we all, we all use that. We all pay the same tonnage, right? I mean, so somewhere in there, we, we need to know what the county, what Bremerton, what we pay. We're all paying the same disposal fees. So we should ballpark know if we're being treated fair. If we're being treated fair is the same as the rest. I want to go stats quo because once you break off one time and go with somebody new, go trying to grovel back, you're not going to get a very good deal. So if we can just find out what our, what our neighbors are paying and if we're in that ballpark.
So Dennis, how about, how about this? Can you get a proposal from Waste Management to maintain a negotiated agreement? And, and remember, that's going to be their first offer and we're going to have, it's going to be a negotiation.
Yeah.
And then somehow, somebody's got to be able to calculate, I know it's going to be a math exercise, the U T C rate and what that would look like. You might need to, you know, finance department.
I, I, I can do it.
Yeah, like I like what you said, public information.
I can tell you what Bremerton's paying.
Uh, uh, that's cool, yeah.
Yeah, I can, it's.
So bring, bring back some examples.
Yeah.
And, and, and get a first proposal from Waste Management and what it is, they, what they're thinking. Because they're saying they want to remove these ancillary services. They have no interest in doing that anymore. And we wouldn't get that anyway if we went with the U T C. So those things are going away anyhow.
Well, I, I think you hit the nail on the head that we're going to have less service.
Less free, well.
For the city.
Citizens were.
As I'm going to finish that, is that unfortunately Dennis, then we do have options in our ser, in our service that you get, you don't have to take, you don't have to have yard waste. You don't have to have recycle.
And that's.
And, and the other thing is you can't.
No, I think you have to have recycle.
Recycle, but your can, your can size can be different.
Yes.
So those are all little nuances, you know, that.
But those are individuals. Maybe we should look at our.
I think to simplify this, we should look at what standard can and a standard rate in our neighbors.
That'd be fine.
Yeah, and so versus otherwise extras will get.
I'm not debating that, but what I'm saying, Mayor, and the point I'm trying to make is we don't want to lose the standard of service that we, that our citizens have. I think that would be a mistake, you know, on that, on that side of the coin. I know that I would be very unhappy going from a 32, if I was forced to go from a 32 can, gallon can to a 64 and pay a higher rate.
I don't believe that is.
No, no, I understand that. But I'm just saying is when we delve down into it and we're looking at that, I want to maintain the same service. And, and Mr. Crocker is over there having a fun time right now.
No, he's, he's wishing he didn't come in tonight.
Analysis and I, I just, and I'm not trying to kick the can down the road. These rates, there's about 40 different options that are going to be provided, from dumpster size for commercial to the residential.
I don't think you needed that. I think what we're concerned about is the average citizen.
Yeah, the residential.
Their services. That's, that's what, that's what the concern is here. So if we can get, get a, what we believe, our estimation on a U T C rate, that it is, completely takes this negotiation process out of our hands and out of Waste Management's. And then also get a first offer from Waste, Waste Management on if we negotiated directly with them, knowing in both of those scenarios that these ancillary services go away anyway.
Right.
Sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Deener has the hand raised.
Go ahead, sir.
I've been waiting patiently for a while. So under option three, where it says that we would lose the ability to influence those community-wide services, right? Cleanups and so on. That's not the same as saying we wouldn't have those anymore, just that the city would lose its negotiation of those. Does that mean that the U T C would be able to negotiate on our behalf?
No, we wouldn't, they don't, that isn't part of what you see, U T C does. They set the rates for the garbage. If we wanted to have, we just have to pay for that and it'd be extremely expensive. I think we'd be better off to have a voucher program and let people go to the dump one day a year or something or, you know.
Okay, so it's not that we would lose the ability, we would not have the abilities. That probably needs to be reworded a little bit.
Yeah, and, and in both, in both opportunities.
But we'd have to pay through a lot to, to, to keep it.
Yeah, and then, you know, with respect to an R F P under option one, I think if Dennis has like a 95-plus percent confidence rate that, that it would be a fruitless paper exercise, I would say that I'm in, I'm not in support of him going through that. I understand what he's saying and I believe what he's saying to be accurate. So, but I guess, Mr. Mayor, that's up to you. And then I, the last thing I would say is, let's ask for the four-month exten, extension. Even if it's to save a little bit of money in the end for our customers in the interim.
I think to get that four months of extension, we have to start a negotiation with them, which I think we're, we're going to. We're going to ask them for their first offer.
Yeah, okay.
And then if Dennis could come back in a month with some analysis.
If they give us the extension, yes.
If not, he's going to have to be here. It's at the end of June.
Yeah, I mean, if, if they don't, then we needn't do quickly, uh, jump to the U T C model so that we don't have a disruption to our garbage service.
And then, do other cities provide the same kind of community-wide services that we provide?
What, which ones?
Spring cleanup.
Spring cleanup, yeah, all of that.
I'm, I'm not.
You're rather unique in that.
I think we might be unique.
So there used to be some ecology grants and, and that funding kind of went away before the pandemic. But there used to be like community block foam, oil cleanup, hazardous waste. It, it was, it was very common. I've seen them at the county and I've seen them at cities, but those are usually grant-funded opportunities.
Well, I think there's probably some correlation out there between dropping these services and then seeing an increase in illegal dumps, dump sites, you know, and road ends and those kinds of things. And it'd be nice to know more about that as well. Maybe our time has come to look at this with a fresh perspective, but with, with all the information.
One more little question. Now, could we change our policy? Are we interested in where people can have an option of taking garbage or not?
I think that's a future discussion.
I think that's not.
That's your.
Not a good idea.
I think it's, I think it's dangerous.
Oh, I, okay, I just didn't, you know.
I would discuss, but I don't know that there are four.
I, I, I like the thought, right? Like, I also come from a place where garbage was paid for in your property taxes, right? Like, uh, uh, we paid sewer and garbage through your property taxes in Omaha, Nebraska.
I think that also results in a lot of illegal dumps as well.
That is a concern. But we'd also have a lot more code enforcement probably for people that aren't taking their garbage service either. All right, so Dennis, you have an idea what you're doing?
Yes, sir.
Noah, you have an idea what you're doing? Sorry. Need a little bit of analysis. All right, let's move on to our agenda here. Council committees. Economic development and tourism, I don't know if you've met, and your next meeting is scheduled for June 9th, so it's coming up here in a couple of weeks. Utilities, have you ever done? Okay, and I see your next meeting is June 9th. Finance met last Friday. Got a report. Do you remember what you did?
Anything that we didn't do tonight?
We talked about the K C R agreement. I remember that.
I'm drawing a blank, all right.
So we've reviewed the sales tax revenue, which was slightly down again, but we're still above budget levels by running about 11% over. Re-revenue is running higher than projected, which is a great thing. We discussed several topics we reviewed tonight. Community events center amendment, Annapolis Creek Culver K C R agreement, and the E R N R vehicle purchase, which was part of our present agenda. These are things we all discussed at the finance committee meeting. We also discussed condition of roof at the library. Current library building is in bad shape. And we're going to go, because we're going to be in there for three, four more years, we're going to partner with the library on repair costs and get that roof redone. I think it's supposed to be sometime in August, July, August, if I'm not mistaken. We discussed, discussed the colors of the generators at the Marine Pond Station. And here at City Hall, they're kind of stick out ugly colored yellowish. And we're looking for some options, maybe blend those into the natural landscape a little bit better. We're looking at options and costs associated with doing so. Finally, Noah mentioned the 25, 26 budget amendment where he'll be truing up the expenses versus our budget. Should be done by the end of June. Is that correct, Noah? And our next meeting is June 17th.
Right. Transportation was supposed to meet this evening, but our city engineer, a death in the family, so he's out. And so really the most important thing that was probably on the agenda was the transportation impact fees. And if I, I was waiting for another month for that committee to look at it and then bringing it back. If I can get maybe, maybe, maybe there's consent system where not, we didn't get that far. So, and I see Councilmember Rose happy, raise hand, his hand. So I just like to get some direction possibly.
Okay, we had a very robust discussion that our work study. And since that time, I've, I've gotten educated a little bit better. As you can see with the impact fees, they're, they have to be spent within a certain period of time. As you notice that on our tip, we have quite a few projects on the list that we won't be able to get all the way through. We had three scenarios for impact fee, transportation impact fees. I had initially championed the, the highest fee. But because of the fact that we have a number of projects and that you have to spend money within a certain period of time, I'm, I'm personally inclined to. I'm I'm personally inclined to drop back to the uh middle one. Uh, mainly because of what we've seen with inflation uh eating at some of our our cost of projects. Uh, I I feel that, you know, there's certain folks that would like to see the the lowest one. Uh, not to price people out, but I still maintain that people coming to our uh city uh need to bear the cost of the increases uh in services that we're providing and not the people that currently live here. So my take on that or uh would be to go to the middle, uh, the middle uh costs that we came up with on the impact fee. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Councilor Ward.
Yeah, um, we continue to talk about affordable housing and the housing costs that we have here and people not be able to buy it. I have young children that are college graduates that moved back here to live here and it's expensive, very expensive. Um, I'm not saying they're going out there and buying new builds, um, but everybody that's run for council elected positions continues to say affordable housing, affordable housing. But every time that we raise impact fees, it raises the prices of houses. And they're, I I get it. They are selling as fast as they're building them. But there's the housing costs in the peninsula here cost a fortune. So raising impact fees is, um, I get we have projects and we got to build infrastructure to support people that are moving here. But um, I'm kind of torn on it. And so that's it.
Yeah. And. Yeah, I um I would definitely not pick number. I wasn't in favor of number three. And we did get something from um Mr. Bond about what Gig Harbor was, Bremerton and Bainbridge. And so we did get a little comparison and maybe it was for two thousand twenty four comparison. And actually, we were right in there with the impact fee. And I'm too, I'm not, um, we'll still get impact fee with even new construction, even if we um leave it at A instead of B. So and plus, we haven't really had that much time to really go over it. So I would still like more information, but I'm I'm more for, I don't really want to raise a whole bunch either.
So you where where?
I'm I'm more like A, but I want to get more information. I feel like we didn't, it was just a discussion out there. And then, like I say, Mr. Bond gave us some, but it was, we were right in the ballpark. So we didn't really, to me, even had to raise it with the other cities.
Councilor Trin, you you raised your hand there. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, um, you know, the cost of building has increased dramatically. We all know that. Cost of living has gone up as well. I sympathize with the Councilmember Warden. Um, we all, he's right. We all talk at any level of government. We talk about affordable housing. The fact of the matter is costs increase. Um, we flat, if we stay at level A, we're we're pretty much flatlining. Um, and we've got projects we still need to complete and with not an increase in this fee, I don't see how we're going to be able to complete these, some of these projects. Um, I am not a fan of the highest level at all. I was beginning and I'm still not at this point. I would like to see that data coming back from our consultant who was going to bring us uh the current rates and when they were last determined at the uh municipalities around us. We still haven't seen that come back as of yet because as Councilmember Deener, uh, Councilmember Ben says, uh, we are right in the ballpark right now, but we don't know when those rates were negotiated or last negotiated or set at Gig Harbor or Paul's boat. We have no idea. Ours have been on the books for four years and we're looking at doing another four year settlement moving forward. So, long story short, I'm looking leaning towards the the level B increase on these. It's not major, but it is enough to help us complete these projects on time. Thank you.
I'm going to mix it up and go to Councilmember Deener online.
Okay, so I think um I've given it some thought. I think Mark did a good job kind of uh illuminating where I'm coming from too. I think that we need to make sure that our impact fees are commensurate with the level of staffing that we have for our projects because as we all know, we don't have a deep bench and it's getting harder and harder to move projects along. So I'm leaning towards B, but I'm also looking for more information uh that that Mark mentioned that we've asked about as well.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, uh, Councilmember Rosa Pepe was right. Last week, we had a very robust discussion around that. Uh, I too have changed my tune a little bit, uh, and not, uh, I think in in getting a little education on the process as well. Um, but I also stated my consternation around a C uh for a lot of what Councilmember Warden said to uh the cost of of housing here, right? Uh, it's like a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars to build a house in Kitsap County before you buy a single piece of wood or put a shovel in the ground. Uh, that's alarming for me. Um, I can't fix all that, but I can help ease what that does look like. So I think for me, alternative C is out. I would like to say that I would challenge the rest of this council to look at the list of what's on that list. It's not just about this dollar amount. Um, because even alternative A is a slight increase to what we charge today. But is it what's right for our community? And I know I get up here and I talk a lot about fiscal conservancy and making sure that we're doing the right things. But I mean, you look at the difference of projects in list A um and specifically two twelve to two point two eight. None of those things are on list A that are on this B, right? Um, in including complete street on uh Bay Street, a roundabout at the bottom of Bay Street and Port Orchard Boulevard. Um, and then for me, you know, knowing what some of these are and and what we're doing, that 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 causes me const- consternation because we're going to raise the road down here. And then I thought we were hoping to develop that roundabout right away, right after there. But we're going to elongate that impact of what's going on there if we don't have all these things on here. And I think the last thing I'm going to add um is that if it's not on the list, we can't get a developer to do it as well, right? I see also on that uh on on B that is not on A is an old Clifton Road and Fagley Road Roundabout. Um, I just am in tune to that because it's on my way to and from this meeting. Um, so I I I think, and there's more development to go on up there. So I I have some concern over not going with B uh over A. I I think I said C is out. Um, and I'd like to just see a little more information and or I know we got from Director Bond last week at our study session. These are engineer estimates. How how do we get close to knowing that we're accurate so that?
When we designed it.
Yes, I I was afraid you were going to say that, but again, I didn't know if there was a a a something that that the the state gives us. It's a plug and play that says this should cost this. Um, okay.
City engineer's best.
I've I've went on too long, but uh you know where I stand.
Developer for that roundabout there that that Fagley is school district. They're they're the only one that project would be big enough.
So as are both those roads us because there are certain sections across the street from there that aren't within city limits. So I didn't know as there's additional development going on in the area that I thought maybe uh.
McCormick communities across the street.
Well, even further down past Christ the Rock Church, further west is there's they just cleared a bunch of, that's the city.
That's that's.
That is still further. Okay, for some reason I thought.
Yeah, there there's no exit.
What's the Rock Church?
Yeah, yes, there's no exit from McCormick West to Old Clifton, west of Christ the Rock, but there is development west of there. The school district is really the only large parcel of land um using that intersection. And so, you know, but by putting it on the list, we're saving the school district money if we build it or we're giving them credit against what they would pay us when they go to build a school.
Okay, and even I guess that would be the southeast corner of that intersection. I think there's a new yellow sign up there or semi do uh that that wouldn't.
That that's the rest of the village, the.
Okay, so there's going to be an entrance that comes right there. Okay, okay, thank you.
So you're Vassalina. You're in the middle.
I'm in A and B. Uh, I don't I don't know, but it's I've I've changed. C is no longer in.
All right.
Remember Chang.
I think one of the the drawbacks of being on coffee with the council is that anytime I walk into Josephine's, I hear opinions. Um, this last weekend, for example, a couple of people were talking to me quite passionately about how they hated the development the before the roads were fixed. And I was trying to explain, well, it's sort of a chicken and egg, you know, we get a transportation impact fee for the growth, but we can't really use it to fix an existing road. And one of them just very eloquently told me, I don't care. I want you to fix the road before you have more development. So I think we have to calm down and, you know, figure out how do we mitigate the current roads for the existing residents? They are seeing more traffic with the new development. They aren't seeing any increase improved roads. So how do we fix that, you know? I would like it.
That's a separate conversation.
But in terms of this, it's like, you know, on one hand, maybe we don't even want to have impact fees if we think that it's raising the cost of housing. I mean, would we go from like A to zero? And I would not support that. I think we have to have these impact fees as unpopular as they are, and I would support at least B. Um, I mean, we have to pay for stuff that we have to do and we have to raise money for it. So.
You you have to keep in mind too, this is a supposedly a six year plan and how long have been it just and it takes a long time to bring. I mean, look how long it's taking us from imposing the one tenth on Bethel to start that design. Uh, you know, hire the consultants to do the work. It just doesn't happen overnight. And and we we are finally accumulating some decent sized uh sums of money in that account um that are going to enable us to, you know, part of the the in all of these plans is gives us that a chunk of money for Bay Street. It gives us uh some dollars that we can use towards the pathway. Um, because we know everything's gone up in cost, Bethel, and so on and so forth. It um but I think we need to be realistic about what we can accomplish in a, you know, five, seven, ten year period. I mean.
You and I were talking, this doesn't have to be set every six years. We could revisit it in a year too. If we go too far one way, we could look at it again. There's some costs associated with that, but um I I think that's what makes me a little more B as well. Um, I think that 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 development's going to happen and 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 we got to squeeze it a little bit to get a little more out of what we need, but uh not too far. So, yeah.
So I I'm I'm clearly gathering the cake isn't isn't baked.
Yeah.
Um.
In the house.
Yeah, so.
Go in between A and B?
Well, I was kind of, I I think, I think every if everybody could look. Yeah, right. If everybody could look at those two. So I I'm hearing three's off the table. Yep. So let's look at those lists between A and B and what what's on. Yeah, so maybe we settle somewhere in the middle and we don't have to decide this tonight. So that's your homework assignment, I guess, is to think about that. And it sounds like staff owes us some data related to when we got the data for what our neighbors' fees are, but when was the last time they adjusted their fees?
And I've I've posed that question. Um, we have a response from Kitsap County. Their fee actually adjusts every March first. So they just adjusted it in March, uh, same as we do. I have not heard back from Paul's boat or I believe it's Gig Harbor that we are waiting on.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. That's interesting. Good.
Yes, sir.
Uh, just one comment reminder for uh council is that you know, we look and say, you know, we're setting fees for four years where we visit and we go, okay, we could revisit in a year. That that is a cost of staff time.
And and consultants.
And consultants. So.
Yeah.
We just need to be mindful of that. I, you know, again, I reiterate that whatever we decide, I will support. But I do want to be very careful about burdening staff and using, uh, you know, and consultant fees. That's all.
So why don't you guys is is to maybe simplify this, look at B and find a project or two that you don't think uh are as high a priority as others and maybe email those to Nick and I. I'm not, you know. So and then if we'll come back with maybe a, I don't know, one and a half.
I I was going to suggest I could just throw them in a quick survey and just have everybody pick their top three and then.
That'd be great.
Which projects are kind of the highest priority and then see if we can meet.
Okay, so you're going to do some sort of a pool poll?
Yeah.
Okay, up to the.
I'll send a poll out.
Thank you.
Tomorrow.
There we go. I I was just because the meeting got canceled and you guys directed transportation to tackle this. I just didn't want to see this stalled. We need, we need to get this work product completed. So thank you for the.
And it's not.
I know we're in committee reports and we uh took a turn.
Well, I I I would like to um just if I could go off on a tangent for a second, Mayor. Um, interest, interesting um discussion uh several weeks ago, uh, when I attended the Habitat for Humanity. The um, they had a kind of an open house forum event. And in talking to them, when you talk about affordable housing, their biggest cost for housing isn't the a hundred and eight thousand dollars, it's land cost, which we really don't have an impact on. And that's what's driving a lot of whether they can build a house. Uh, you know, and at some point in time, I think it would be worth a work study of talking about the components of affordable housing and what are are really that we have control over as a council than more than just a discussion of buzzwords of affordable housing. Because, I mean, I would certainly invite Habitat Humanity, uh Kitsap Housing, uh even a builder if we wanted if wanted to bring some in because you you're right, Eric. It's it's a buzzword. Uh, we're all challenged with it. Uh, I agree. And but I think we need a better understanding about it when we talk about it, of what real input do we have? And what are the factors that go into affordable housing? Because I know if you walked up to a builder right now and said, hey, I'd like you to bu- bu- build a hundred and fifty dollar house, uh, no disrespect, but they probably laugh at us.
Well, well, for sure. Also, you know, beyond land use, um, I've learned um from Mr. Bond what, you know, affordable housing apartments, like what that means as far as how many is set aside. And what that qualifies for. And if you make more, you require more of them set aside and the other eighty percent, those are going to cost more. You know, I mean, so um because their margins are already thin. So um being on these committees has really educated me a lot.
That's what I'm saying.
A lot of that, I think, what you just said, as far as if somebody came in for a discussion on that, that would educate us a lot as well. I agree.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Sorry for the tangent.
Yep. Um, okay, on to on to land use.
Yes, we had a, we had a discussion. Uh, most of it uh evolved around discussion of what we had at the work study last week. Um, there wasn't a lot of surprises. Uh, I would ask that Nick, when it comes around to you, talk talking about the A D U. Uh, and also the other thing that came up was about parking enforcement. And I'll ask the mayor in his mayor report to kind of talk about what happened over Memorial Day weekend uh with that. If you wouldn't mind, Mayor, sharing some of those numbers uh with that. And that was primarily what happened land use was our discussion at work uh at work study. Thank you.
Not in my report, but I know that we wrote twenty one tickets, twenty nine.
Need to, but the why is the interesting part that you shared with me about where they took, you know, some of the ones that took place in, you know, people were parking in the yellow.
Oh, no, we we I I haven't even talked to Nick about that. So what I noticed and it it is, it's only really an issue when we have major festivals and that parking starts spilling up the hill. So we're only patrolling to Prospect Street. And what I observed is behavior, well, I don't think we need to be concerned because most, a lot of that is for our parking as we get farther up the hill with the time. The people are parking in front of hydrants, parking in front of driveways, parking on the yellow, along the yellow stripe and and they shouldn't. So uh on these larger events like we had for mosquito fleet, I think it might uh be beneficial for um our parking enforcement person to not to chalk tires and write time tickets up a little farther up the hill, probably all the way to even even to Givens, but to police that bad behavior that's that's happening out there that um was very apparent on Saturday when downtown fills up and the parking starts spilling up the hill and people don't want to walk any farther than they have to. So they park in front of a fire hydrant and they shouldn't do that. So.
Thank you.
Just an observation. Um, uh. Um, uh, so lodging tax completed their work till this fall. Sewer advisory, you have anything to share?
No, we don't have another meeting uh in September as we get to budget.
Okay, and copy of council, I saw somebody's report. I came through our email.
Fred reported on that.
Recently. So uh, on to the mayor's report. I think that's where we're at. Yep. Um, Saturday, what mosquito fleet festival, what a downtown was packed. It was a great event. Um, seagull calling, there wasn't as big a crowd on Sunday for, I, I kind of wish that our ribbon cutting and the seagull calling event would have been on Saturday and that walking tour. We had maybe ten people come to the, to the ribbon come, come, uh, the, um, thank you for the cookies. We're still eating those cookies down at uh downstairs that Jay brought. Um, but great, a great event Saturday. I haven't had a chance to talk to Sam, but I, I could tell when, when the people are parking all the way up the hill, there's a lot of people downtown. So I, I, so I knew there was. Um, if you haven't seen it, drive down uh Bay Street uh to the Roundabout by KFC. We finally, I talked about it many months ago, but we had to wait for good weather and we applied the SK logo on the Roundabout. So as you're heading out of town towards the high school, it's, we put a white circle and the SK on it and wow, thank you for getting that done, Public Works, uh, before the, the grad parade. Because that was, that was my goal to make sure that happened before the graduation parade. Um, I had a week, I mean, I can't remember. I week ago Friday, uh, I attended the Housing Kitsap, uh, the, the key ceremony. So the Riverstone Development, so you're crossing the Lund Bridge. There's forty homes being, that will be built there, the first ten homes. And that's a self-help this program that Housing Kitsap does, very similar to Habitat for Humanity. And I, I, a whole month or so ago, I helped out at a work party there and interacted with some, with some of those homeowners. And it's such a cool program because they're helping build each other's homes. They, they're building a community. They, they, they get to know their neighbors on a level that most of us don't have. And I, I think it's a, a really special program. It puts people in houses that likely couldn't afford a house if it wasn't for this subsized program. So it's pretty cool to be there for the first ten people that got their keys to their brand new home. And uh, group two of four is under construction right now and uh learn more about when the key ceremony, I'd love you guys to come join. And they have work parties from just about every weekend up there. If you ever wanted to come up and volunteer, I'll, uh, I can get you the information on how to go about that. It's pretty cool. Um, the old Clifton Intertie project, I had a, an application into Congressman uh, Congresswoman Randall's office. Unfortunately, I got an email uh, on, over the weekend that our application was denied. And they've, they had other projects that they're going to fund, but positive news, we did get a million dollars for the Bay Street reconstruction in the um, in the state's budget. So that's, that's positive. And that concludes my report. So Mr. Ryan, what do you have for a staff report?
Uh, just briefly, last week was, I mentioned it last meeting, uh, was National Public Works Week. Um, and we participated in the Kitsap County Equipment Rodeo with our Public Works Crew. I believe every city in Kitsap County, and we also had uh Jefferson County participate. Uh, several, I'd, I'd estimate probably two to three hundred people were out there. It was a great showing. Uh, our very own John Hubbard took third in the loader contest. So we have bringing rights that we have the third best loader operator in the region. So that's it. Thanks.
Director Ryan, thank you for getting our uh water park open. Uh, we saw the, the news came out. Uh, I did drive by, I did not stop. I was not brave enough. Uh, the park was full. Um, so thank you.
That, that was true, and I'll pass that on.
Friday afternoon, I asked about, it's going to be nice this weekend. We're going to splash pad open. Will we open it after Memorial Day? And I said, no, we don't. We need that open this week. So fortunately, we scrambled a, a crew out there and you know, anything with water irrigation, how often does it not turn on right or work right? Unfortunately, everything was in good working order and they turned it on and they got it going. So hats off to the Public Works Group for dropping what they were doing and getting out there and getting that done because it was, I think, important to the community that, that we had it open for the weekend.
And they did have it all ready and go inspected. It was ready to turn the switch. They just, it's pretty ass.
Just, so just waiting for me to find out that they weren't going to do it or, so anyway, Mr. Crocker.
Uh, nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Bond?
Yeah, I wanted to report on the pre-approved ADU program. You've been hearing about this now for probably eight or nine months. And um, I'm happy to report that our building department has approved the first four plans. And so they're going to be ready for public use, I think, by next uh week. I wanted to share my screen here, um, just to remind you, the um the, the four initial units that will be approved, there's um in the bottom left, there's a four hundred and eighty square foot studio uh ADU. Then there's a six hundred square foot, uh, one-bedroom ADU on the bottom right. The top left is an eight hundred square foot one-bedroom, uh, or one-story, two-bedroom ADU. And then there's uh on the top right, an eight hundred square foot, two-story, two-bedroom ADU. So that's four hundred square feet per floor. So these plans are going to be available um very shortly. We're working on getting the application forms uh, onto the website and into our permitting system so that people can apply for these online. Um, we are, uh, we've written a, a document, a very detailed document on how to go about using these plans. It's about a five-page document of all the steps that you need to take, everything from whether you should get a survey of your property before you build. Uh, meeting with contractors, the types of questions you need to ask. Um, and the options available with each of these plans. So some of the plans, you can do a hip or a gable roof and you have to choose a roof pitch. You get to choose different windows and doors and lighting options. And so um, there, you know, these things are approved for the structural components, but all of the, the finish details you have to decide for yourself. So um, uh, the uh slide deck that I have here, th- this is just a slide showing how each of these can be customized and will uh look different despite being the, the same uh dimension. Um, and then the other thing that I'm excited to report on is um the two additional plans that we're going to be getting. I have concept renderings for those. We're not going to have final plans probably until November, but the, the two units are shown here. We have a flex carriage house. So a garage with an apartment above it. And this is going to be available as either a two-car garage with a one-bedroom apartment or a three-car garage with a two-bedroom apartment above. And so this is something that if you have an alley load lot, you'll be able to put a carriage house off of the alley and, and have an apartment upstairs. And it's designed in such a way that the apartment gets one of the garage bays and can access directly to the stairs and go, go upstairs. And then the, the, the other new option is a larger one-story um uh Rambler that could go in a backyard. So this is a thousand square feet. Um, it, uh, we were discussing with the home builders, whether they thought a two-bedroom or a three-bedroom would be more popular. We are going with a three-bedroom, one and a half bath unit. And so that is the other uh plan that will be um finalized. And the nice thing here is that it's being designed with either an entrance on the broad side or on the short side end. So if you have a long skinny lot or a wide lot, you can configure it in either uh direction and, and decide where the door goes um to, to work best for your lot. So those will be coming soon. Um, I also wanted to share that the um we have fee estimates that are going to be available to the public. And we, we've typed up this fee estimate for the one-bedroom, six hundred square foot unit. And so um you will be able to pull this permit um for uh fifty-seven hundred dollars, including the payment of your park and transportation impact fees. School impact fees aren't currently imposed on ADUs, but it will be imposed as of July first. So I will update this form. And it's fifty-six cents per square foot, so not a ton of extra money being added to the list. But um, this is our estimate for the six hundred square foot unit. Smaller units cost a little less, larger units are going to cost a little bit more. But um, we're hoping that we will be, be able to issue these permits if you submit a complete site plan that meets our requirements. We're hoping we can turn these around in two weeks and get people uh out the door and, and building uh these units. So um, I'm, we're going to do a social media post and a, a Facebook and our, our press release as soon as everything is live and ready to go. Uh, I'm hoping that's either Friday or Monday at the latest. Um, the other uh piece of information I wanted to share is that somebody who wants to use these plans, they can do a request to get a copy of the plans and they will, they will receive a copy that says not approved for construction because we don't market approved until you've actually paid your fees. So you'll, you'll have to prove that you're a, that you own property or have a site in Kitsap County. There's a one-page form you fill out to request a copy. We'll give you the plans. You can go meet with a contractor, talk to the contractor about how much they think it's going to cost. Um, I can also share that the KBA is going to be providing some cost estimates for all of the units. Their members are taking a look and are going to give us kind of a range of what they think it'll cost to build each of these. So we'll, we'll hopefully have that on our website here in the near future as well. But uh, we do want to get people, get let people take a look at the plan so that they can write, make their own site plan and then submit and, and turn our, uh, turn these around pretty quickly. So um, really exciting to see this uh uh nearing completion and hopefully it will be a, a success.
Director Bond, uh, thank you, one, for your work uh with the coalition. I don't know if it's you, someone on your team. I don't think you guys understand the anticipation for this. I don't think I understood the anticipation for this. I sold the RV to somebody over the weekend uh who wanted to talk to me about that, knowing that I was on city council. When was he going to get his hands on these, you know, uh, he doesn't live in city limits. He lives in the county, so it's all another thing. But um, are you all putting them out simultaneously?
We, we are. We could probably have them out tomorrow, except that we're waiting for everybody to kind of release this all at once.
Okay.
Um, we, we are um doing this simultaneously. And I, I did present this information. I was on a panel with the Realtors, their annual housing uh breakfast last week. And there's a lot of interest from people that want to do these in rural areas, which is uh different cup of tea. And the county is, is not changing the process for rural areas. This is only available in the urban areas, Kingston, Silverdale. Um, if you're going to do this in the rural area, they're not going to give you the plans for free because the tribals are making objections about rural. So um, it will be available within the UGAs um and.
Yikes, I didn't check where he was actually zoned. I just knew he was outside of city limits, so that'll be on him. Uh, and then he did have an interesting question that I didn't know how to answer because there's, there's been some excitement about this. Would they be able to do a little bit of change? Like, so say he wanted to move where a fixture was inside of a bathroom. I, is that?
Do that.
There's a list in our how-to guide of what you do get to choose and what you don't get to choose. And so you have to hire an architect to change certain things on the plans. And then it's no longer a basic plan and you have to pay the full freight for the building permit. And there's, there's no savings. So um, it's, it's very explicit in what you do get to, to modify, I think. Um, I, I could probably pull that up for you.
You're, as long as it's all in there and I can tell them, just go read it once it comes out. So uh, thank you.
If you watch the land use meeting, it's all presented on there.
That's for change. Nick, are you guys going to um update the fee estimate to include the cost of utilities?
We, we are not because our current policy allows you to connect an ADU to your existing meter and your existing sewer. Also, we have part of the city served by Bremerton Water and part of the city is westbound. And so I don't, I don't want to tell people what they're going to pay those utilities. We're just providing the estimate excluding utilities. And if you connect to your existing meter and your existing sewer stub and you're a Port Orchard customer, there, there isn't a fee. But if you, if you want that separate meter so that you, because you can, under state law, subdivide the ADU onto its own unit lot now. Um, if you were going to take that approach, you would have to then pay for a connection in order to do that.
Okay, the only reason I'm asking is a lot of people may think that there is no maintenance utility fee because they've used their existing connections, you know, water and sewer. So they may not realize that they're going to be charged with another, another ERU on their utility bill. Uh, even though they use the same connections. So I think maybe just a warning that that happens. And it's a fully ERU. It's not like half. So.
Sure, I can make a note on the user guide to let people know that that's something they should expect.
All right. Mr. Bond, anything else?
That is all for me tonight.
Mrs. City Attorney, have any words of wisdom for us this evening?
I do not. Thank you.
Chief?
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, I did send everyone on the council the press release from this morning. Last week was our uh state conference for the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, and we re-accredited. Um, I know I've spoken to this body about this before. Um, we set this as a goal back when I was hired in twenty nineteen. We were accredited in, in twenty twenty-one. Um, re-accrediting is far more difficult. Um, you have to proof a number of items for the previous four years. And it's very easy to, to slip. I sit on the accreditation commission for the state and there are agencies that, that miss something and fall off through about a hundred and fifty standards. Um, I give all credit and congratulations to the team downstairs. They did a phenomenal job. We got through that without a single audit finding. Um, and I'm just immensely proud of the work that they do. So I just wanted to share that publicly. Thank you.
Congrats.
Yeah, thanks.
Good to hear, Chief. And the clerk's office, Ms. Janine, what do you have?
Let's see. So I do have a couple of things. Um, so Coffee with the Council is coming up on June seventh. And so far, I think I figured out how Brandy does this. Um, council members. It'll be next weekend.
Just tentatively put me there and then I'll confirm.
Yeah, great. And then um Brandy's on June sixteenth. Uh, she was out on surgery. She is doing well. So you guys are just have to. Tasha, our intern is actually fantastic. She is assisting the clerk's office. A lot of her. Um, and so at the, I think it was the May thirteenth council meeting. Um, you guys were invited with the Kitsap Builders Association for a bus tour of construction and like construction sites and projects. So if you guys are interested, just let me know. I did send out an email this morning just to contract for form. And the last thing is just to really remind them, so tonight you guys did adopt a resolution which amended the twenty twenty-five council meeting schedule. So the June tenth and the seventeenth are regular business meetings and the June twenty-fourth meeting has been canceled.
Ms. Blunt, you want to? Want to give you some time?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, it's been a couple meetings since I've been here. We're required to provide you some updates when we make changes with the mayor's authority granted to him. The first is under an ordinance regarding job descriptions, letting you know we've changed the, updated the finance director, police services coordinator and accounting assistant. One, job descriptions, really just housekeeping. Um, some formatting and some clarity issues on those job descriptions. Secondly, we're required to let you know when we um make any changes in city policy. Mayor has authority to amend that. And we did make two changes. One had to do with the HRE VIBA program, which is a um health reimbursement arrangement. When we updated or renewed the guild contract back in February, we had to update the chart. It says how much um the city and the employee contribute to that from the guild's perspective. And we found an error in our bereavement leave policy. We had inadvertently excluded the aunt or uncle that was related to the employee by marriage, not by blood. So we made that correction as well. It's always something. So that's all that I had for tonight.
Would, does Tasha want to come out and introduce herself?
I think she.
I don't think she's shy. Okay. And then Councilmember Morrissey had a great idea. He would like to know why you came here to the city of Port Orchard and what you hope to learn during your internship.
Um, hello, everybody. It's nice to meet you. My name is Tasha Sorensen. Um, I've been a person in Kitsap County my whole entire life. I went to South. I graduated in twenty fourteen. Um, I've currently been in healthcare for the last ten years. So I'm just kind of like, what do I want to do instead of being in healthcare right now? Um, so being here in the city of Port Orchard, I would like to just be able to experience everything that you guys are willing to offer. Um, and just add on to my skills of what I can do furthering in my career. Also, in the climate of our political well-being, it's also just like nice that I'm able to be with you guys to be able to experience what's going on in the city of Port Orchard. Um, even though I live in Bremerton, it's still like nice to be able to like see what you guys are doing for your community. Um, and then that can affect also Bremerton. Ironically, on Saturday, Greg Wheeler came to my house to do his like reelection um marketing. And that was hilarious because I was like, hi, and I am also the city clerk's intern for Port Orchard. So then I just chit chat with you about what you guys do. So that was kind of cool that I didn't have to email him. He just came to my house and he was just kind of like, hey, how's it going? So um, but other than that, that's just me. So do you guys have any questions?
Any further questions? How long are you here? How long's your internship?
Till November. Um, I applied currently for the radiology tech pro- program at Olympic College. Um, so I'm kind of in the prelims if I'm going to get into that program or not. I find out at the end of September. So it's kind of like, do I want to do that or do I want to do this? So it's kind of. I find out at the end of September. So it's kind of like, do I want to do that or do I want to do this? So it's kind of everything's up in there right now. Yeah.
Well, thank you for being here. Before you leave, we'd like to hear what you learned, right? So yeah, so hopefully you're you're keeping. Yep, you're keeping a little list.
In the November. Janine's doing a great job. I love. That's so funny. But yes, I will. I will create a list for you guys.
Thank us a report when you're off.
Of course. Nice Excel spreadsheet for you. Thank you.
All right. Anything for the good of the order, Councilmember Rose type of news?
It was a happening week downtown. Two things that came out. One was we were at the park, Quorum Woods Park Splash Pad, and it was rocking. And parking was at a premium. So thank you, Dennis. I appreciate you getting it up and running. And please let your folks know that there are a lot of people in at Splash Pad. Second thing, thank you to the council members that stopped by the library and the book sale. Friends of the library basically almost sold out. And all the their money goes to funding children's programs. So thank you for stopping by. They have other sales later in the year, but it just showed how busy they were on Friday and Saturday. Thank you.
Councilman Chain. Yeah, I want to thank the the Attorney's Office. I know we normally don't like to think about it, but I was actually going into a K C R meeting on Thursday when I was talking to another board member who just told me you're going to recuse yourself, aren't you? And I thought I don't think I need to because I don't personally benefit. But I quickly sent an email and a text to Charlie, who was on vacation. He forwarded to Jennifer, who gave me a response right away. And based on what they told me, I decided I would recuse myself just for the appearance of propriety. So I want to thank them for that quick thing. It was like right on. You know, on the moment as it was happening, I should have planned before, but I didn't know until I talked to this other board member. So thank you.
Anything else for the good of the order? Go ahead. And I forgot I've got to do citizen comment period too. Not there is anybody, but.
Oh, I have to just echo how great the mosquito fleet was. I was down there Saturday. Yeah, it was amazing. So many people. And then Sunday too. And then, of course, the steeple calling contest is always fun and judges. And then, yeah, I just noticed it today, the the Roundabout with the big huge S K, which is amazing, super cool. But could you, I don't eat, I didn't even know it was happening. I don't know if any other city councils knew that this was happening. I didn't. So could you tell us how this came about?
Well, I did.
Well, you just said thank you to them, but how?
I I did communicate over the winter and I said, when the weather gets better, we're going to put this logo on there.
Didn't Tim Winter come to ask you about that?
Yeah, it was. It was something that I talked to Superintendent.
In the when the nice weather, we're going to put a logo down there. So yeah, how did so superintendent that started?
I was was my idea and I I went to the superintendent and I said, would you like to see a pot print? And so Tim weighed in on what we would put in in there to kind of honor their high school and our students. And I went to Dennis's team and I said, hey, you know, we wanted to do an S K logo, you know, on the Roundabout. And it was in my mayor's report a number of months ago.
Well, somehow I missed that. Sorry. I did. Yeah. And I was boom, you know, and I did.
Just like all of other, you know, the any of the painting that we do out there, the curbs, the markings, we have to wait for good weather. You know, it has to be dry. The pavement has to be dry in a certain temperature and we've just gotten into that window here in the last week or so. And it would enable this to do that.
Was it? Who who painted that? I mean,
Our crews.
Like altogether? It wasn't just like one person. It was like.
Probably a couple of people. I.
Most likely it was two to three people.
Yeah.
Just watch traffic.
The the stentles were fairly large. I saw I they I had to weigh in, you know, to make sure they got it lined up right. They didn't want to put paint down until they they knew it was the way we wanted it. So so Councilmember, go ahead.
Yeah. I know, like I mentioned earlier about the impact fees, you know, we say a lot of things and it's like, do we really mean it or not? Piggyback off of what Scott said earlier about the Community Center and the arts. This last week, obviously I go to Arizona a lot. And you take a corner and there's a I was wondering what they're doing there a couple of weeks ago when I was down there. And there's this beautiful artwork that they installed right there in the corner. And I have photos of it. As you cruise around, the next corner going into another long stretch, there's another piece of art. And I just really think that we consistently mention that we want to do certain things in town and have an identity and something to to build on that we can see when you enter town, enter a town and it's kind of an identity. I think that we do need to stop mentioning that we want this. And as a council, we need to be more adamant about it and really say, this is what we, this is the requirement that we that we insist in having. Because it makes a huge difference. Scott, you know, he traveled and saw some roundabouts and I know Jay travels a lot and sees a lot of different things, you know, out in that that we'd like to see around here. But I think we really need to really put our foot down, work with the mayor and try and start implementing more more art like that because it is an identity. You know, and if you do one, you can probably piggyback off of that, that concept throughout town. If it's appealing or whatever, but I think we need to make more of an more of an effort about it.
That's all. Well, I'll bring back the, I know it's been a while and most of you, you know, some of it's on my on the wall, on the wall in my office, but the the Community Center in particular, the the artwork, the the treatments and things that are in there are just spectacular. And I think where we have a tremendous opportunity to do something potentially on the scale of what Paul's close done on their new Roundabout is that that Bethel Roundabout is going to be big. It's going to be a double winged Roundabout. And I think that's a prime opportunity for us to do something significant at that intersection because it and that's probably the other ones that we've got on Bethel are primarily smaller, you know, and those Bethel Phase Ones, we, you know, we brought those to you guys and got your guys' feedback. They're largely green, but they do have some artistic elements to them.
I posted photo of the Roundabout today on a couple pages. And I mean, pages are just full of people saying how how awesome it is, you know, and because it is, we're one high school town in its identity and it's looks fantastic. I'm not sure how long it's going to last. Hopefully a real long time. But hey, it's 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 a huge effort and putting it out there and doing it. And I just think that people appreciate that and
Huge.
Yeah, I see. We need to band together a little bit, you know, and make more of a real firm effort on it.
You know, and it's been a concerted effort to, you know, many communities build things like our Tremont Corridor. Gig Harper did one in their shopping district. Bremerton did their Gateway Project. And within five years, they're ripping it all out and putting ugly drain rock down. Then they don't still don't maintain the weeds in it. And I I thank you so much for the support and the funding that you guys provide for us to maintain that and keep it the beautiful thing that it is because it's for sure. I mean, our attorney probably came in on Tremont tonight, didn't you? Yes, where the roundabouts are and all the landscaping. Isn't you you don't you don't drive it every day, but isn't it? Isn't it beautiful? And I I I we should all be very proud of that.
Yes, I agree.
I was talking to Leslie today. She's on our Rotary, the Port Orchard Rotary, and she did come last year. And she wanted to get some artwork downtown. And and so we're going to really talk about that for our Rotary and then see where it can be and get money that that represents our downtown, but it's from the Port Orchard Rotary, but it will be pretty significant. And so I think that's a start right there, just going with that.
Anything else for the good of the order? And I'm going to go back to citizens.
I just want to add that I also think that the Tremont Corridor looks wonderful. Circling back to what we could do with some of our roundabouts, if you go to Bend, Oregon, they actually have a Roundabout Art Tour that you can do. And that's just going through different roundabouts around the city and seeing all that they've done. And so I know that there's opportunity for us, but it's not just roundabouts. It's along our pathways and perhaps other corners like Eric has mentioned, there's there's things we can do.
All right, I'm going to go back to citizen comment. And I have nobody in the audience. Is there anybody online wishing to address the council? No. All right. With that, I will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you. Bye, everybody.